Okay, welcome to the Troy Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 13th. Please call the roll.
Mr. Walkie?
Here.
Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Mrs. Snead?
Here.
Mrs. Mahan?
Here.
Mayor Bemish?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mr. Cappers?
Here.
All members are present.
We have minutes of our February 27th meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? Motion for approval? Motion to approve, is there support for the motion?
Second.
All those in favor, sing a word by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next matter on the agenda. Staff have a report on the Villages of Concord preliminary plan?
Yes, we do, thank you. At the last meeting on February 27th, Planning Commission tabled this agenda item to have a discussion about easements and rights of the property owner. From that meeting, the application exactly the same that was proposed last week, the last meeting, we reached out to our Lowell Director. I think all of you received an email correspondence from Mr. Kerber with his take on the authority and the case in front of you. After reviewing his comments and looking at the proposed plan, we are recommending that the Planning Commission provide a positive recommendation on this application based upon those comments of Mr. Kerber. Essentially what it comes down to, in Grant's comments, is that we should be judging the merits of the proposal up on whether or not it complies with our subdivision and zoning code requirements, and it does meet those requirements. That is why we are making a positive recommendation to the Planning Commission.
Okay, before we go any further, what's still on the table, does the commission want to take the matter off the table?
I move to second.
Motion by Mr. Titterington, was it? Second by Mr. Bemish to remove the matter from the table. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. So the matter's now off the table and we can discuss it. Any questions of staff on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question on the, concerning the subdivision itself. The Paul Revere Way, Paul Revere Way entrance onto Wayne Street was vacated back in the early 2000s. Was that vacated after, after the Villages of Concord was established as a plat?
I believe it was. If not, it was roughly at the same time. It was still vacated at this point, what the applicant has proposed to do because of rules of the fire department. Any new building within the subdivision would have fire protection, essentially a residential sprinkler system in the buildings unless they can get the two property owners to provide an access easement on that land to connect Paul Revere Way to Wayne Street.
The, if that, if a subdivision like that came before us, before the city, that didn't have access there, this, it probably wouldn't gain approval, would it?
It probably would not, and I'm not sure why it was actually vacated without an access easement provided on that. That was done, I believe, in 2000.
Yeah, and I can't remember the history on it, and at this point, it probably doesn't make any difference, but that was one of the first things that, that I noticed. And I'd certainly like to see that repaired and clarified and cleared up before we proceed further on with another approval of substandard subdivision. I mean, essentially that whoever owns that now to plow that straight up, there's no emergency access whatsoever that could be had.
That is correct. When we talked to the fire department, they were okay with Laurel Tree Court having the access to Paul Revere Way to provide fire service in addition to what they required was, as of now, they would certainly go over even without an access easement.
Right.
To pursue that, but once they, that's why we require the residential sprinkling to satisfy that fire code.
The, I mean, that's just an extra burden on people. I don't know how, I mean, we're, we live in a modern city. You know, this isn't like, you know, some podunk place that has these, you know, long, closed off streets. And I just, I think, my opinion is we have to just wait and see and get that thing squared away. Someone was responsible for vacating it. I don't know who the owners were at the time, but whatever negotiations have to take place by the owners of the property, the entire owners or the developer, needs to be done before I, before I can approve it.
I believe Mr. Hawke and his representative have reached out, at least they said they were in our last conversation, to those owners. So I don't know what the status of that is.
They may well have, but I mean, I have no results in front of us. I mean, I've heard also that they've reached out to the owners of the condominiums, and I'm hearing from the owners of the condominiums that that hasn't been done either. Yeah, I'm sure there's some people here that are concerned also.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Titterton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Jim, you're saying that you want to see that unvacated or rededicated?
Or easement, dedicated, whatever's necessary. I mean, if this came before us today, it's a plat without access to Wayne Avenue or Wayne Street, whatever that is, we couldn't, you know, I wouldn't recommend approval.
Well, and that's kind of what I want to get clarification, and I don't think Mr. Kerber's here in the audience, but this is really kind of an either/or. What the fire department is saying is, is yeah, you, you could recommend it, and it would be a valid recommendation because the requirement of sprinkling the houses would be in place in lieu of rededication or an easement on that street. So that is a viable alternative that our fire department has said and put on record?
No, no, I understand. I can't remember the fellow's name, just the location wise, is there was a fellow named Bob Sink that built a house on the very far end of that cul-de-sac. Does that mean that those people that live there now are in jeopardy and have to go put sprinklers in their homes?
I would say currently both structures removed.
Correct, just new structures.
Right, you know, that meets the fire code. Why is the fire department recommending this?
I think because it satisfied their code requirements.
Well, that means those houses that sit there now without sprinklers don't satisfy the code requirements. And, you know, it's, I don't know whether, we're not necessarily making anything worse on what it is now, but it's not making it any better. It's just, and this is one of the first hurdles I see needs to be overcome. And, and this has been on before, it's now for what, since 2014, again, 2015 or 16? And here it is again? It's basically the same plat with a couple lots changes, and that's it.
My concern is still the use of the condominium's common elements for that public access. The access easement that has been bantered about, I'm not sure if the Condominium Association has the right and authority to go ahead and give an access easement, much less who has the authority to grant the access easement. The declarations specifically indicate that the common areas, which is what Lantern Lane and Paul Revere Way are, are specifically for the use of the condominium owners, their guests and invitees, not the general public, not the developer, not any other purchasers of that real land. So I can see that as a second hurdle that I'd like to see taken care of before we entertain our preliminary plan.
Mr. Davis, did Mr. Kerber address that concern?
He did. In his letter, he talked about that he actually could not establish whether or not that was the legal authority to do that because he's not been a part of HOA activities such as appointing presidents, reelections, things of that nature.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a question for information. Are homeowners associations the same as condominium ownerships?
Condominium homeowners associations and homeowners associations are two different things. Homeowners association is an association of owners of real property that are not associated with a condominium regime. Each one of the condominium regime owners belongs automatically to a condominium owners association, COA if you will, instead of an HOA.
Right.
Each one of the owners of those condominiums, and I believe there are 20 of them, has an ownership interest in the common areas and is an automatic, and is automatically a member of the condominium owners association.
But that isn't necessarily the same as declared as a homeowners association? Is it now that doesn't exist?
Well, that's a good question. Under the declarations themselves, the declarant, Roger, RL Hawke, LLC I think it was, was to have divested itself of its interest in homeowners association within five years, or at the beginning of the condominium association, which would have been back in 2005. What steps were taken and whether or not the homeowners association ever had a meeting? I have no idea.
I just didn't want to get another, you know, situation where we're interpreting homeowners associations if a condominium association is, exists at this time.
Right. Well, condominium owners association exists, I believe, because it's filed with the Secretary of State's office. Once again, it had an initial meeting to elect three trustees. Whether or not it's ever had a meeting since then, once again, I don't know. Any other questions of staff? We have, by letter, invited the condominium owner members, or at least the owners of those properties, to attend today to talk about that very issue. Would any of them like to come forward and discuss that? If you do, please come forward, we'll need your name and address.
I'm not sure that we're, that we're really up to it right now. We're, we're just really getting, handling it.
I'm sorry, sir, would you come forward, just give me your name and address?
My name is Ron Dassell. I live at 1465 Lantern Lane at, uh...
Right on the corner?
Uh, next to, second one. Like I say, all these things that are coming up now, we were over, we haven't had many talks that were realistic in terms of things actually being, been taken care of, that it's just been a lot of talk. That we, we think it's a, the, the problem is with RL, uh, I can't think of his name right now. Hawke, yeah. Has shortcut, shortcut a lot of different things. And now it's come to an end where he wants to do somebody, something else, and just kind of forget all of us and take the easy way out. This idea of that, of that entrance being there, that we're talking about to Wayne Street is really very necessary. I think, I think it should be talked about and people, I'm not an expert on any of this at all, we're just, I'm just, I just live there.
Have you ever had a meeting of the condominium owners association?
We don't, have we?
Ma'am, if you're going to speak, would you come forward and identify yourself, please?
My name is Shirley Rangich. My husband. We don't, we get information this way. Tim sends us a letter. Mr. Hawke does not contact us and sit down with us and discuss anything that, that could be done, should be done. He tried to change it from a condo to a homeowners association and yet would not sit down and actually talk to us about the differences in the agreement that he wanted us to sign.
How long have you been an owner?
Eight years.
Have you ever been asked to elect a board of trustees or officers?
No.
Have you ever been notified of a meeting?
No, no, no. This is a condo, but it's not. He's the developer, he is the president of the condo, his wife is the second person, there's never been a third person, a condo member, on what you would call a board. And unfortunately, we would be more than happy to talk to him. We're there, we have a clubhouse, we could meet with him, but we don't get the opportunity. It comes up to a situation like this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else want to comment?
I'd like to talk to you.
Come, come forward, please.
Well, I'm Florence Muchler at 1323 Paul Revere Way. I have lived here, there, 10 years, and I have done nothing but bitch, excuse my French. And I have worked with a lot of people up here, Shannon, Robert, Duane Hackett. I come up and I really work hard at it. And I think I know more. I mean, I went to every meeting that our so-called committee had that they appointed themselves, and all they did is talk and do nothing. And I don't believe in that. If I'm going to talk, I'm going to do something about it. And I want to thank Shannon and all of them that I have worked with have been a great help to me. And I know a lot about our place, and I would advise nobody to live there. Because I'm 84, and I came back there to have a nice place. I don't let them mow my grass, I pay for my grass to get mowed, I pay for my mulch, I pay for all my trimming, but yet I still pay him $150. And I called a couple weeks ago and told him my driveway needed snow out of it. And I got his cellphone number, and he never returns my call, and he does not do the work.
Florence, you mentioned that you attended a few meetings.
I came to all the meetings that our so-called committee appointed themselves at. That's been going on 10 years, eight, nine years.
When was the last meeting?
The last one was last summer, in the April or May. We had a meeting, we were supposed to have another one.
Okay. And were these meetings to elect board members?
No, what they did, they elected themselves. They came one night, they don't do anything professional. They came in, well, Jeff's going to do this, Linda's going to do this. Does anybody have any objections to that?
Was there any action?
That's what they said.
Was there actually any action taken to elect officers?
No, no, not, not the correct way. Like a ballot, a secret ballot or anything. In fact, I even called Mayor Bemish one time. You remember me, you hung up on me?
He's not running for reelection. Florence, thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to speak? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I want to say a couple words here, please. And I'm Walkie. I just moved, first of all.
I'm David Kinniger, 1306 Paul Revere Way. I just built a new house, moved in in October, so I've been there four months. Okay, so as far as the question you guys were discussing earlier is about the entryways, and that would my question be what he said, what do you do with the existing? If this one is not existing, then we only have this entry, and we have no sprinkler system, and all of a sudden you build new ones and they got to have sprinkler system? Two and two don't equal four here, guys. Either, when I bought my place and my lot, I have two entries. So either somebody ain't telling something right, because that, that's how we get in, it's right there. I'm, I'm 150 feet away from that gate, and you're telling me I got to go the other way? But the fire department, I don't have no sprinkler system, and the new house will, but I don't know what that means. So how can you approve that? I mean, that, that entryway has to be a permanent access, period. I don't, until that's done, nothing matters. You can't build houses back here. And he states in, or somebody states in here about the homeowners will take care of the roads. Well, is that taking care, I got 80 feet in front of my house, so am I taking care of 80 feet by, to the center of the road, which is 15, 20 feet where that is? And I'm going to patch my hole and the guy next to, you can't do that kind of stuff. It's got to be association, then you've got a homeowners association, you've got a condos association. Two and two don't equal four here, guys, you can't intermix this up. Either, any of you people that live there wouldn't put up with this. Something has to happen. First of all, you've got to maybe start a home till you roll it all together, I think it all has to come together. But that association, whatever you call it, has to maintain all the roads, and everybody pays X amount of dollars, just like right now, the roads are, never have been completed. They need to be, they're file coat and all that stuff. I'm assuming Roger will take care of that, I don't know that, it says that in the contract that the roads be done, and then I guess we take it over. I don't know. And you guys, I don't, I would like to know, maybe someday, why if we get 50 houses built in there, and Roger gets done what he wants to do, which is great with me, will you guys take over the streets? And then we ain't got to worry about all this stuff? Or is that never a possibility? Or how do you guys determine that? And I might just ask them that.
Well, to answer your question, right now, those streets are private streets.
Right.
Common areas of the Condoms, Condom condominium association, which has the maintenance requirement.
Right, but with the condos association, see, this is the biggest problem we have here, guys, or ladies and guys, whatever. We have an association, homeowners association. I am a homeowner, not, I don't have a condo. So I'm by myself, so if I was a homeowners association, I would be the only one in it. So I'm just nobody. But I abide by the condos association rules, you know, the grass, the, you know, you can't put fence up or do whatever. The thing is, since I've been involved, and I rented off of Roger for two years before that, three years, so I've been in this plat for almost four years. The meetings, you talk about the meetings, we've asked for financial reports, anything. We do not know, we've got 10 people own houses there, and 10 people that Roger owns, or Mike, whoever. We don't know if that money, if they pay their $150, I know we do, there's no records of anything that I've seen, and every time I talk to these guys, they say we asked for it. So there's never a meeting, there's no money, there's no funds, there's nothing recognized. The streets get cleaned when they decide to do that, if it's an inch or more or whatever. The grass gets mowed, the pool worked last year, or the year before last, about two weeks, three weeks. Maintenance problems. Well, somewhere along the line, just like on this, and I don't know how, if you guys even involved in that, somewhere along the line, there should be an escrow counter or something for all these streets that get paved. How do we know that the streets are going to actually be a final concept? You know, we're in limbo, and I don't know if you guys can help or where we stand, but the left don't know what the right's doing, and Roger holds all the cards. He may have 50, and we got two just because we're pain. We're, we're just, just enough to be a pain, but we have no, we don't know what's going on. So if you guys could help any way on that, but I would not do anything until that easement gets done. And then, if you have anything, or who we talk to about making us a legal condo association, but we really don't want that, eventually we'd like to do a homeowners association, because the condos are basically done. It's been 14 years they didn't get established, so anything built now will not be condo lots. So all that intermixes. But we bought, I bought, that Roger's going to take care of my street, as long as he gives $150, he's going to clean my streets, mow my grass, and originally, and we have a clubhouse, have a swimming pool, all this stuff, he's to take care of for $150. He worked on that. I would say, you know, he's, he's a little lax, they're lax, but he tries. Anyway, if there's any questions?
You said you're not part of the condo?
No, so I, I, I bought, I bought a, I thought I bought a place, and I'm by the pond, and I was going to, you know, build a house there. When we got ready to close on it, there was no lot there. It wasn't even, so I had capital, or first choice, whatever, come to the city and make me do my lot, and now it's a legal real lot. All the other places are actually condos, and they only own, I guess, what their property sits on, the house itself, the foundation. The rest around that condo is owned by VOC or Roger, and they maintain that. Mine, I own 80 by 100.
Did you finance the purchase of this?
Yes. And see, the first, see, you can't do nothing down there, can't get financed if you try to buy one in condos because they're not real condos, and they're not recognized, but they are condos. So the bank wouldn't give you money, you got to pay cash for it, or the line of credit or whatever, it has nothing to do with that. So that's why everybody's up in limbo, you can't, we can't even sell. I was going to buy some of the condos, but it had to be cash, you couldn't go to the bank and they wouldn't give you no money for it. Unless you've got rules. I mean, they do sell them, he's sold, he's sold a couple of them, some for sale. So it does work, it's just, it's what they call it, creative financing?
Well, you, but you front on Paul Revere Way, right?
Pardon me?
Your house is on Paul Revere?
Yeah, I'm the, if you're building the golden gates off of Wayne Avenue, I'm the first house left, the new one, we'd just be out.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. But that's, that's got to be, that's got to be in the condo.
And so that's why the rest of the, no, the rest of the lots...
How would, how do you get a permit to build if you don't have an address?
And you don't have any access. He can't go out on the street.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Because he has no access. I don't know how it ever happened.
Well, you got a good point there, now, I don't want to piss Roger off. I'm sorry.
The streets run by the condominium association.
Let's calm him down, now I got...
You're not in the condominium association?
But I got to abide by the condos association, it's, it's in my contract when I bought it. I can't build, put a fence up, I can't do nothing. I got to send them $150, as of right now, whatever fees would actually be.
That's a rule between you and Mr. Hawke.
I have access to the pool.
My concern is how you get access to anything once you get in your house.
See what I mean?
Because outside the back door, the side doors, the front doors, that's all common area for the condo.
No, I got 80 feet around my, I got, I got, I got 75 feet out in my, that I own. And I got 25 in the front, 24 in the back, that I own, that I can do anything I want to do technically, as long as it's by the rules.
So that's another complexity.
So it's a whole, and that's what he wants to do technically, I guess I'm between the condos and million, he wants to build new homes over here, that the homeowners, the new ones, would be responsible for everything, which really makes a cluster, so I guess my question is, do we have a toll gate? Do we have to charge these customers to come in and take money to pay for our roads that you guys ain't going to take care of, we got to take care of? And, I mean, it's just a cluster.
Okay.
Does that, any answers?
Well, that's complicated things.
Yeah, I think we've got the cart in front of the horse here, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Any other comments? Any other questions of the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let me throw it back at staff. You know, we've, we've heard a lot of complaints over the years. We've always been told that because this is a private development, because there's supposedly an HOA, because this is, I don't know if it's technically a civil matter or not, that it's not something that comes to the planning commission level and can be part of our decision if they've met all of the requirements of our code. Is that not what Mr. Kerber is telling us?
That is, that is what he is telling you. He is basically saying, if I go back to his email, going back to, I guess, several points, one, it's why, what Grant basically stated was he could not provide a legal opinion whether Mr. Hawke or the HOA has complied with its internal regulations. If he is acting on behalf of the duly elected slash appointed board of trustees, he has the authority to grant the easement. Further, a misrepresentation of his authority could place Mr. Hawke in legal jeopardy with the HOA. And essentially what he's saying is that since he can't determine that, what staff is going to do is we need to look at the merits of the case with the codes, and does he meet the codes? So he meets the subdivision and the zoning code requirements in the discussion with the fire code to kind of address the concern. What we were told was, and I'm not probably as good as Matt Simmons at explaining this, was that cul-de-sacs, if they have more than, I think it's 30 homes built on, they have to have fire protection because that exceeds the number, because they already have roughly 20 within what would be considered a large cul-de-sac because it doesn't connect to a second street. It's why he's requiring the residential sprinkling to meet the code requirements. So that's why we did recommend approval, because it did meet all three of those requirements.
And the subdivision requirements permit public streets and accessible easements?
Correct.
We have to determine whether or not we want to accept an access easement.
Right.
Does this answer anything that you were bringing up?
Is there an access easement across that?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's my biggest hangup, there's no legal authority for entering the plat.
But that's not the only way in and out of that?
No, but if that was coming to us as is, as proposed, with no houses built there, I, I wouldn't vote for it. I mean, it, it probably wouldn't meet the city's, you know, regulations.
Well, I guess I'm going to ask, because it does meet city regulations... Well, I guess I'm going to ask, because it does meet city regulation. It does meet the subdivision zoning and fire code requirements. Without that access easement, if they would not agree to residentially sprinkle, then I would say that you are 100% correct. But because they have met the sprinkling.
Is that, is that, I'm, I'm not questioning that. I understand, I understand. But is this something we do normally? Have long streets with cul-de-sacs and sprinklers on it, in houses?
Not typically. I think this is a newer.
It's just an alternative, that's a legal alternative. That's, that's all we're saying.
Right.
I don't know that we've got any other, we've got longer.
Yeah, we've only had a discussion about one of our other developments that was going to have a bridge connecting to Southview. And this was a way around that could be done as well. But that did not pan out.
I mean, I, I'd feel comfortable with, you know, an easement in hand, or, you know, if this was a development that eventually was going to work its way out there. You know, so we rented this, I think, in one of the developments north of Sherwood, where they agreed to build the street out for access and give an easement for fire trucks on a gravel driveway off Detroit Pickle Road. Maybe ought to build a bridge over the pond and go out and see if Bob Cole will let them go have access through the Stoudt.
They're talking about an access easement, not just across the vacated Oakmont Drive portion, but also across all of the condominiums property, which is private street.
Yeah, I haven't even gotten there yet.
That's another issue.
Yeah, I just, that's the second issue that I, you know, that, that I've got too. Particularly after Mr. Kenninger just spoke.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Having listened to what Mr. McGary is saying and others who I've shared, it just seems it's pretty cloudy right now. It, I know I seconded to take it off the table, but I would also recommend, after listening, that we may table this again with the understanding that it would be good to have Mr. Kerber here and Chief Simmons as well, to get a little more clarification as to what, what's in the best interest. And so I would, I hate to say, I would recommend that we table it again.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is the motion to table, is there support for the motion?
Nope.
Support.
Motion's second. Please call the roll.
This is the table.
Table.
Mr. Cappers?
No.
Mr. McGary?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
No.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Okay, there are five yes votes, so that would, may it's table, yes.
Okay. When it comes back up before the commission again, I'd like to have you re-notify the owners, any neighbors.
Okay, we'll do.
As well as Fire Chief Simmons and.
Grant Kerber. Mr. Kerber.
Okay, next on the agenda is Halifax Estate Settlement. Staff have a report.
Yes, we do, thank you. In front of you is, there's actually two pieces. There are two pieces to this request. The first is a minor amendment to the preliminary plan. This was approved back in 2014. And as we were discussing the Section 5, our city engineer had made a request to the developer to put a cul-de-sac on Cool Harbor Drive because we were concerned with the intersection that would be occurring at Dewey's Road and Cool Harbor Drive. So to remedy that situation, they put a cul-de-sac there and then dropped Lacewood Drive and connected it down. And they still kept their two points of ingress and egress. And so the minor amendment can be approved by the planning commission to the general plan, and that is what we are recommending today.
Everybody follow that? Any questions of staff? Commission want to take any action?
To be removed from the table first, because it had been tabled.
Is this tabled before?
Yes, it had been.
Oh, okay.
Turned below as a tabled item.
I'll entertain a motion to take it off the table and discuss it.
Motion to remove from the table?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Remove, this is removed from the table. Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, now, the application for the change. Any further discussion on that? Anyone want to take any action?
This is for a recommendation to council.
This would be, just to recommend, this would be approval by the planning commission.
For the minor amendment.
For the minor amendment.
I, I would make motion to approve the amendment.
Second. Motion's second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Okay, it's approved, the minor amendment to the preliminary plan.
Okay. Staff, what do you have next?
Next would be the final plat for Section 5 with the newly amended general plan. This would be in conformance to that plan. It encompasses 23.161 acres with 20 building lots. All the lots would meet the minimum requirements of 40,000 square feet. Dedication of right-of-way would be 2.150 acres. And parkland has already been accepted and will be paid with each, principally, basically with each home that is built. Staff does recommend that planning commission provide a positive recommendation to city council.
Any questions of staff? Commission want to take any action?
Again, I'll recommend we give a positive recommendation to the city council to approve this.
Second. Motion's second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
I'm sorry, the second, was waiting, Mr.?
Mr. Wolke.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. This will be recommended to city council.
Next matter on the agenda is historic history application with 214 West Main Street. The staff have a report.
Yes, we do. The applicant is the Tabernacle Brewing Company. They are requesting to make some improvements to the property located at 214 West Main Street. The owner of the property is here with us today. He was previously here concerning stained glass windows. So the proposal now is, once again, I broke these down into three items. So the first request is to replace the existing deteriorated storm windows on the front of the building with a clear glass storm window. The proposal is to repair the existing stained glass windows and install the clear storm glass over the existing stained glass windows. The trim of the storm glass will be replicated with the architectural features of the stained glass windows. The color of the trim will be a light ivory. I don't have color numbers at this moment. The proposal is to paint the trim of the storm glass the same as the color of the trim of the architectural feature of the stained glass. But until they get the deteriorated storm glass off, they're not able to determine exactly what that color is yet. But it will be in a light ivory.
Can I stop you for just a second?
Sure.
The stained glass, it's going to be retained at the lower level and the upper level. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
So staff recommends approval of the proposed clear glass storm window as the installation of the glass meets the United States Secretary of Interior Standards for Treatment of Historic Properties. The installation of the clear glass will allow the existing stained glass windows to be seen from the exterior. And the proposed clear glass storm windows meet the City of Troy regulations.
You've got three recommendations, let's deal with this one right now, okay? So the first recommendation, I'll be for the commission, is remove all the deteriorated storm windows and retain the stained glass windows underneath. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
And, and the installation of the new storm window, right?
The clear.
Yes, clear storm windows.
Yeah, so, so there's no, there's no approval needed for the restoration of the stained glass because that's just a repair.
Right.
It's, this is a recommendation to remove the old plexigat, plexiglass storm windows and install clear glass storm windows on the outside of the building over the stained glass.
So they're not going to remove any of the stained glass? They're going to leave everything as is?
It will be removed for a little while for the restoration process, but then it gets put back in exactly as it was.
So the antenna is to repair?
Yes.
Excuse me, somebody's shaking their head in the air.
Yep, sorry.
Sir, will you come forward? The one that's shaking their head, most vigorous.
I was going to say, I think we said this could come out last.
And station name and address, social sharing, things like that.
Anthony Scott, 1245 Fairway Drive, Troy. No, it won't be replaced. You cannot take it out without completely restoring it. It's, we're sandwiching it with.
Okay, so stained glass windows are going to stay in there while you replace the storm windows in front?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the stone glass is not moving. We're essentially repairing it from the inside with this matching stained glass. So we cannot take it out. It's a full restoration, which I sent Shannon that number.
Okay, thank you.
So the key is the stained glass remains, and it'll just have a clear.
You'll actually be able to see it now.
And, and I just want to confirm, I, I thought last time, the ground level stained glass, if I'm looking at this picture, that is staying also.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I'd move for, if you're going to take it separately?
Yes, please.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and support. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
You're down.
Okay, Shannon, you want to continue with the second item?
Sure. Second item is the proposal to install a wall sign, two logo signs on the front door, and a weather vane on the peak of the roof. This building is permitted to have 60 square feet of signage. The total of all the signage is for 51 square feet. As you can see in the picture, the, the wall sign will be Moeller Brew House. And it's made out of laser cut, offset lettering, and matte black metal. There will be two chicken logos on each, one on each door. And those would be made of vinyl and will be light ivory in color to match the trim of the clear glass storm windows. And there will be a weather vane on top with a chicken. And it will be the same material as the Brew House sign, which is a laser cut matte black metal. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed signs. The signs meet the City of Troy sign code, and the signs will not detract from the historic integrity of the building.
Okay, I'll give you the first question. What's the significance of the roosters on the doors?
I don't know that, other than that's their logo.
Those are, those are chickens now, roosters.
Are chickens? Excuse me, I couldn't tell. It is a rooster? What's the significance of that?
It's fowl.
The poultry.
Poultry, yes. Are you going to serve fried chicken, or?
Tony Scott, 1245 Fairway Drive. The Maria Stein location, cross-tipped churches in northern part of the state all have weather vanes on top of them. That's how they used to signify that they were actually churches. So that's the Maria Stein location, that's the distribution that we do. That's the logo for, for the brewery.
Why are you putting them on the doors?
That's, it's the logo. It's actually the logo of the brewery.
Got you.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
I've got one question. When somebody puts a weather vane on, is that considered part of the signs?
In this case, it is because it's a logo. And because a logo has a commercial message, it meets the definition of a sign in our sign code.
So if they put a whale or a.
If they would have put a whale and it has nothing to do with their business, it's just a whale.
Okay.
Okay. Commission want to take any action on this issue?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's second, Mr. Snee? Any further, Mr. Wolke, Mr. First. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
All righty. Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, Shannon, the third item.
Okay, so now the applicant is requesting to paint the front lower one-third of the building. The color will be a light ivory, basically to match all the other light ivory colors on the building. At this time, applicant is unable to match that color because the old storm window is still being there. The United States Secretary of the Interior Leavers for the Treatment of Historic Property states that unpainted brick on a historic building should not be painted. However, these standards are guidelines, but not a requirement. And each case should be based upon its own merits due to the circumstances of each project.
That's real wishy-washy. Any questions of staff? Am I missing a staff recommendation?
No, you're not.
So you're not making any recommendations?
No, I'm not.
And the brick that's there now is the same color as the rest of the facade?
That's correct.
Really makes a sign stand out.
I think, yeah, it's going to look good compared to, to the window changes he has on the side and the front of your mansion, I think it's going to look good.
So the decision was made that they, that course line.
The soldier course above the, the doors would not.
Is going to stay brown.
The ori, the original rendition given to me showed this, the lower soldier course being painted. The original rendition given to me showed this, the lower soldier course being painted. And we asked that he not paint that soldier course in order to show the definition between the, the two colors and be able to then see the stone arches above the door.
That was a good recommendation. I like that. Now, I was able to tour the building with Tony after the last meeting. Just from the, just when he pointed out what he's doing inside and outside, I, I would recommend that we approve this.
Are you a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Is the motion second? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Approved.
Next matter on the agenda, Historic History Application for 305 Public Square Southeast of the Dybe Building. Does staff have a report?
Yes, we do. The applicant is Robert Burnett of Outlook Financial Center. They are a new tenant in what is currently known as the Dybe Building. It's on the second floor. The applicant is proposing to install a 4.88 square foot window sign on the outside door leading to the second floor. The applicant is permitted to have a total of 25 square feet for signage. The window sign will be, actually be clear vinyl decal with white lettering. Staff does recommend approval. The proposed sign will meet all of the City of Troy sign code requirements, and the proposed sign will not detract from the historic integrity of the building.
The, the total signage for this location is 25 square feet, or is that just for this applicant?
That, that's for that applicant.
Because there's other signage there now?
That's correct.
Okay.
In a multi-tenant building, each tenant is allowed, is permitted to have at the minimum of 25 square feet.
Thank you. I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I just want to be clear that, that the picture we have with their logo as it's shown is exactly how their sign's going to be. It's not going to be an additional, all of the ones that look similar like that. It's their logo on that white background?
Right. It's, it's their logo on that background.
Any other question? Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next we have the application for final development plan for Halifax, I think it is. Halifax Village, does the staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. This was approved as a plan development, the first step in the plan development is approval of a general plan, which was done by the Planning Commission and City Council. And the next two items pertain to steps two and three. This is the final development plan, which is the second step. It's exactly the same as the general plan that was approved. The only difference that you'll see in the packet is this has covenants attached to it for the developments. This is, we consider this as one development. I think the developer considers it two because it's one plan development. So there's patio homes on the west side and zero lot line townhomes on the east side. Staff is recommending approval because the final development plan matches exactly the general plan that was approved.
Do you read these covenants?
I read through most of them. I don't always understand all of it.
Do, uh, what I take a look in these covenants are, you know, who's taking care of the city streets, the maintenance requirements, things of that nature. You probably hit those, did you not? I mean, everything looks.
Correct.
Like they're okay.
The, the ones.
Stormwater.
Yeah, looks good. The one suggestion I would make, and we had this happen in a previous development, is maybe we put some language in there that states that if these are to be changed, they come before the Planning Commission, because it would be essentially the developer who would go in and change those as soon as we walk away here today.
That's a good point.
That would be the only recommendation I would make.
I think we had that issue once before, didn't we?
That, that has occurred before, yes.
Good point. Any other questions of staff? Commission want to take any actions?
Is, is Mr. Davis's suggestion being included in the staff recommendation?
Yes, it would be.
Then I would move that we approve it. With that.
With the addendum.
Addendum, yes. That any changes to those, come back, those covenants come back to Planning Commission.
Is your second to that motion?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie's second. And staff has that language from prior use, correct?
Yes, and we can give that to the applicant.
Okay, and you make sure it's in.
Correct.
Into their kind of, into their declarations, okay. Okay, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next matter is for the Villas Townhouses or something?
This would be for the record plat of that same development. There's, this is the third step in the plan development process. The record plat, like I said, it is the final process, and we would recommend approval because it is in compliance with what is now the approved final development plan and general plan. We recommend that Planning Commission give a positive recommendation to City Council to accept the record plan.
And once again, the, the park land was already resolved, that whole issue was already resolved?
That's correct.
Any questions of staff?
Move for approval.
This is a recommendation, council?
Yes, recommendation, council.
Motion support, is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
It was Mrs. Snee that made the second?
Oh, Mr. Titterington, actually. My voice sounds.
I guess so. I can't talk, but I get here. Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Approved, recommendation to council.
Okay, staff, next adding on the agenda the application for final plan approval for the Heritage of Troy Country Club subdivision. Staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. In 2018, approval was made for the preliminary plan for the Heritage of the Troy Country Club. This essentially encompasses just under 25 acres. It will be developed as a single development. There's just one phase. Essentially, all the lots will meet the R3 single-family requirements, which is a minimum of 15,000 square feet. We do have 2.976 acres of right-of-way to be dedicated, and the developer is doing fees in lieu of, which has been already approved with the preliminary plan. Staff does recommend that Planning Commission provide a positive recommendation to City Council to approve the final plan.
Any questions of staff?
Move for approval.
A motion to approve, recommendation, recommendation to council, Mr. Titterington?
Move to recommend approval.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Snee? Is that right?
Mrs. Mahin.
Mrs. Mahin, okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Approved, recommendation to council.
Okay, next matter is the final plat approval and dedication of right-of-way for the Reserve of Washington subdivision. Staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. This is for final plat approval for section one. I believe there's three phases in this development. It essentially encompasses 19 acres with 26 building lots. The zoning is R3, single-family, 15,000 square feet. All of those proposed lots do meet those requirements. The developer will dedicate 2.5786 acres of public street right-of-way. The names in the development for this section are Newcastle Drive and Chapel Drive. Fees in lieu of have been accepted by the Planning Commission and Park Board, and we recommend a positive recommendation to City Council.
Any questions of staff?
I have one. This subdivision sits adjacent to another subdivision. What subdivision is that?
Fox Harbor.
Fox Harbor. And I see Fox Harbor has a stubb street that goes down into the, still yet raw acreage. Was there any thought about connectivity between Washington Road and Fox Harbor?
They will actually connect in the future phases.
They will?
Hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Commission want to take any action?
I would make a motion that we recommend approval.
Motion to recommend approval, is her second?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Navy? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Approved, recommendation to council.
Okay, staff, next matter is rezoning applications. Do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Part and linear partner in Three Gen D LLC has applied for Planning Commission to consider a rezoning of vacant land on Peters Road. It's 10.284 acres. It was recently annexed into the city, and the current, currently the zoning on the property is county zoning R-1 AAA, one-family residential, and county zoning A-1 domestic agriculture. The applicant is requesting the zoning of the parcel B rezoned to R4 single-family residential, which has a minimum of 9,000 square feet in the area. The land is currently developed with a single-family residence. It's located on the east side of Peters Road and north of the proposed, the Heritage of Troy Country Club subdivision. The surrounding zonings, like I said, are A1 domestic, well, surrounding zonings include county zoning of A1 domestic agriculture, A2 general agriculture, R-1A1 family residential, and City of Troy zoning R3 single-family residential. Applicant is proposing the rezoning in order to develop the property as a subdivision of 22 lots with an average lot size of 17,860. The reason why this is being proposed as an R4 and not an R3B, which is less dense than R4, is in a very preliminary plan that I have seen, the two corner lots leading into this cul-de-sac subdivision are smaller than the R3B allows, but still fits with the R4. So there will be 20 lots that are actually large enough to fit R3B with two lots that make it so the applicant is requesting R4. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning because the rezoning is consistent with the intent and purpose of the City of Troy zoning code. It's consistent with the surrounding zoning districts, and is consistent with the City of Troy Comprehensive Plan, Fair Fair Plan.
I have broached this subject a number of times with staff. I don't see any consent by the owner here. I mean, why doesn't our application have information that the owner consents to this zoning amendment?
Please, or, I assume he assigned the application, he would be the owner of Three Gen LLC.
You're showing that the owner's Jane Delkian.
That's my bad. This is, it's no excuse, but this is an application that's formatted differently than the historic approval. I should have asked for a letter from the property owner.
Personally, I don't think I have any problem getting it, but I guess I don't mind having this approved subject to obtaining the consent of the owner.
I agree.
And I'll make that motion.
Well, should we first have not a public, not have a public hearing?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. That's a motion, right, Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion concerning the public hearing?
So yes means no hearing?
Yes means no public hearing. Please call the roll.
Okay, so on the public hearing question?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Okay, motion is passed. PC will not have a hearing.
And I'll make the motion to recommend the affirmative application for the zoning amendment to City Council, but not before the owner consents to the application.
Second.
Motion second? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Recommendation to council is approved.
Okay, staff wouldn't mind. I don't know if you can get any, correct that form or make a change in the form, but put a spot there for the owner consenting to the action. Okay, thank you. Staff, next matter, consideration of proposal to authorize a consultant garden company. Talk to us about that. Two hours of our time.
Yes. So essentially, what we did, we reached out, kind of at the request, excuse me, of the Planning Commission, to give guidance on what to look for with historic reviews versus materials, colors, facades, things of that nature. What was being proposed to us was probably the best two hours of your life you're going to receive in what they call a workday event, where they would learn information from you, what issues you're having, what kind of recommendations you like to see from them. So out of that work session, we can expect to receive takeaways that they've received and then outlines and recommendations for the Planning Commission to consider when dealing with future historic district reviews. So we wanted to have that discussion with you. You had a proposal from them. Is there anything else you'd like to see? Would you want to move forward this? Is this beneficial to you? That is our question.
You know, I've been one of these guys that have broached this subject many, many times as to the subjective nature of what we're doing and asking for guidance. This may very well be the guidance we have. It's going to cost 4,200 bucks. Out of whose budget's that coming?
That would come from the economic department budget.
Okay.
The what?
Planning Commission budget.
Planning Commission budget. The planning commission didn't really have a budget.
The general. There's not enough in, there's not enough in there.
The general fund, yes, okay. My, the danger is, I've been a part of a number of these charrettes before that really, we spend a lot of money and we don't get anything for. And I, this question's been in front of us enough, I'm willing to take a chance of that happening and spending the 4,200 bucks. What does everybody else want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I, my question was going to be is, if staff could prepare what they see or some of the issues that we have trouble with, that'd be helpful for me. Generally, I don't know what I don't know until I need to know it. So it's, it'd be helpful, there's typical things you've seen over the years that the Planning Commission struggled with.
Well.
You know, before we, before we entertain them, at least lay out a scope and maybe save some time and money of their, their rehab, so we don't have to start scratching.
Well, the way I took it, to me, was that, that it's, it's things that I know we've seen at least two of, and I've only been on the Planning Commission since January, so that idea of the reuse of historic properties.
Right.
And, and different materials, as you're saying, different, updated, you know, the windows at the Carolines and one that we just approved with the brewery, I mean, so I think it's because of the changing reuse of historic properties then that we're going to see in more and more of, is what I took it to be, is that we would get a broader scope of maybe what's happening in other places, more than just what we've already seen, if I understood.
Yeah, that's what we talked, it's actually Joe Nickel from the yard company. We reached out to him because he was familiar with downtown Troy through the MKS case study. So he was familiar with some of the cases that we had gone through, and we actually provided information to him on what we felt for some of the cases that Planning Commission and staff struggled through to give guidance on that. So he already had some of those cases and reviewed those, several of the cases that Lynn has already mentioned. So that is why we reached out to him, and that is what we were hoping to get from him.
So I was reading in here, the three-step approach. The first part, or first step would be the two-hour. The second would be what? What would be the second step?
Step one is kind of the review of the materials of past cases that we provided to him.
This is what they do.
Yeah, they would kick their back, and we would say, here where we struggle.
Okay, so step one is to review the recent cases.
Correct.
Step two is the two-hour work session.
Correct.
And step three is what, who makes the recommendations for move forward?
The yard company would give written recommendations to the.
So that's the three-step for the cost that we would be paying.
Correct.
Okay.
To follow up on my comments, it'd be helpful if you, if whatever you're, summarize which you're going to be sending to him for step one to us, and then if there's any additional things that any of us see or take the time, let's add to it.
That's a good point.
Because there's some other things with, landscaping came up one time too, I remember, and that's, I've been, I'm good about it, but not in a historical sense.
Well, what I can do is, is reach out and send an email to each of you, asking if there's information you'd like to have in there, then I can compile that and provide that to him if you would like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So do I take it, do you want to do this?
I, I just think that we're going to see more and more of those types of things as things get redeveloped. So I think it would be valuable to see what experiences other locations have and what guidance we might can get from that.
Okay.
I can see value, a lot of value.
Keep in mind that as a result of this work study, that we will probably get some recommendations on how to act in the future. But once again, as you indicated on something else today already, it's guidelines only and, and not mandated. So we still have our gut reactions that we can make to matters. Okay, so do we need a motion to do this, or are we just going to say?
I would. We're expending.
Okay, and you will? You would, or you will, or?
I make a motion. We continue on.
Is there support for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Got it.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahin?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, does staff have anything else to come before the commission?
I think we've taken up enough of your time. No, we don't.
Commission have anything else you want to discuss?
You'll be looking at, what, two-hour time block fits all schedules?
Yeah, we will, we will coordinate that with you guys.
After step one is finished, probably.
After, I'm sorry.
After step one is finished.
Yeah, that's correct. Correct, yeah. It'll be probably a ways away.
That's what I wanted to see down the road, what are we talking about?
May I have motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion set, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you for your attendance.